Mr. Powell, would you like to leave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of March eighteenth, approved payroll, approved vouchers, including special funding for the quarter, approved and signed fencing estimate and installation agreement for the Park County Fairgrounds and approved and allowed the chair to sign petitions for inclusion for Northwestern Water District. Pleasure, your board.
Madam Chair, move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Next thing on our agenda is development standards and regulations update, DSR, as we refer to it. On DSR one, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners and Planning and Zoning staff have been meeting pretty much once a week to work through chapters one through four with those initial changes that were put out to the public, dealing with public comment that we received back, both online and in person at the public hearings. So continue to work through that. We have another meeting scheduled for next Tuesday afternoon. On DSR two, we've been holding open houses through the last two weeks. Those have been to receive the information from the consultants that they have compiled from the surveys and the first two open houses that we had in each planning area. We have one more. It's scheduled for April ninth at the Cody Auditorium. Those that haven't attended any of these in the last week or two, you're more than welcome to come to the Cody Auditorium and look through some of the results from the survey and what the next steps are. That is also all going to be available online within the next week or so. If you would check engageparkcounty.com. You will be able to put comments on the maps and put comments on the use tables. So there will be some instructions there. And so if you don't have time to join us on April ninth between five and seven at the Cody Auditorium, please feel free to go online and take a look at it or contact the Planning and Zoning Office. Yes.
And Madam Chair, I just want to, for Zach, in case he's putting anything in the paper and or anybody else, I strongly encourage people to really look at these changes in these drafts that are coming from the consultant because we found several errors, in my opinion, and people that have attended. So you really need to look at these close to make sure that they are indeed what information that was gathered earlier. We found some places where there was complete tracts of land that were zoned industrial, no longer used to be used for residential areas. And that was not what was conceived by at least the majority and/or the major landowners that it affected. So I strongly encourage people that are in their planning areas or other planning areas of interest to review these. And also to look at the uses and the redesignation of zoning classifications such as rural residential estate. And we'll be discussing these further as we go into phase two, but.
Madam Chair, just to echo Mr. Teal, it was the actual landowners who spotted this section and after discussion, we thought maybe we came up with a solution for them. So I think they left relatively happy afterwards, but it's important to check out where your land is in the county to actually see how you're going to be affected. And there was an extensive conversation, especially at the Ralston table. So they're still trying to figure out what they want over there too. So these are important meetings.
They are, and they are just the beginning. There will be quite a few more, but we need to get through these hoops to keep drilling down. So any input that we can get from the public will be helpful. And as I said, if you can make it on April ninth, that would be great. If not, please be in touch with the Planning and Zoning Office to see how you can comment or join us online at gageparkcounty.com.
Madam Chair. The Tuesday, what's the timeline on that? Is it one o'clock?
Yeah, one fifteen.
One fifteen.
Yeah. It'll follow our work session in the morning. Okay, anything else? All right. With that, Mr. Powell. Kate Powell, BLM Field Manager, an update on our region. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
It's been a while.
It has. Appreciate being here. Appreciate all the commissioners and welcome. Looking forward to working with you. What all do you want to know? What updates do you need?
What have you been doing?
Are you home for a while?
I am home. Yep. I've been back to the field office since January, was working on a public lands rule for six months before that. And I'm guessing the public lands rule is going away, but I don't, I probably can't say that. Lots, lots of projects. This was a good tune up. I got to go meet with the team at the Chamber of Commerce a couple of weeks ago. And so that was a great opportunity for me to sit down and write and meet with our staff and catch up on a lot of the projects and different things that are going on to go share with them. So I'll, I'll share a few of them that we've been working on, that I shared with the chamber. I'll share a few with you. So number one, we're working on the Heart Mountain relocation, withdrawal with the foundation. And so really excited about that. Seventy-four acres there around the the foundation and the property that they have. And we are not all the way through our NEPA process, but we are getting very fairly close on our EA that we will do with that. So we'll be able to, it's Bureau of Reclamation property. But because they're a sister agency and they don't have the, the means and the jurisdiction to transfer land, much like we did with, with the commission or with the county on the shooting complex earlier, a couple of years ago, we're working on that with Bureau of Reclamation and with the Heart Mountain Foundation, Relocation Foundation there. Really excited about that. So it'll be, one of our challenges is the federal minerals underneath. And so we are doing the withdrawal for those reversionary interests, those mineral interests underneath that land as well as the surface land. There's also several buildings that are on the National Register of Historic Places, and therefore that triggers a couple other agencies that we then work with to try and be able to transfer all of that property to the foundation. But really excited with that. We're moving forward and excited for the county. We went out, not this last summer, but the one before went out as a, as an office and did a tour and just fabulous facilities that we have there and a great resource for the county and for those that are coming in and the local residents as well. So really excited about that. Mentioned the, the other shooting complex. We are working on the, the new shooting complex. And Lloyd and I have had a couple of discussions about that. I've had good conversations with Brian Edwards and the road and bridge crew there. Your, your county engineer appreciate that communication and that coordination that has been good. Sounds like you are working on on a single route or a route for a proposal for the road coming in there. Once we have that, then we'll move forward on our process. I did learn this week that because of all the the state land, the BLM land, we've got a active mine right there. There may be some tribal interest that that may go on our major projects list for the state of Wyoming. I'm trying to keep it off of there because the BLM nexus is, is pretty small. But if we do, then that will end up on a fifteen or thirty day public comment period, which we know the county's already done, or there've already been, you know, public comments and open houses and discussions about that. But as part of our NEPA process, we may have to do a, a public comment period on that, which would just be on e-planning, but could slow down a little bit. So we'll, you know, Lloyd, I need to, I'd like to get with you and Brian and, and some of the forward Cody team unless you sit down and keep moving forward.
We're looking at appointing that board today.
Okay.
Joint Powers Board.
Great.
We'll start making that transition for who you are with.
Okay.
With Brian.
With Brian. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. That's trying to keep one point of contact.
Yes.
And as we move forward, but really looking forward to that and looking forward to what that will, that'll bring to the county and how we can, we can assist there. Any questions or thoughts on that one?
Chair, Kate, I really appreciate you coming in, taking time to come in. I think it's very important now with just BLM, but all of our federal partners and agencies to keep communication lines open. You know, we have project come moving forward that some you're aware, some may not be, you know, when you mentioned the shooting complex, you know, we have also, we're in the works of possibly expanding some of our widening some of our gravel sources. So you know, there's possible BLM issues with that move that may be coming up forward. One other that you're probably aware of, and that's seven RP, you know, is now complete. You guys have a major recreational site back there on by Hogan and Luce. We are also working with the state on Paint Creek crossings.
Yep.
So there will be some, some, some travel issues there short time that we're hoping to get those knocked out this spring or at least one of them.
One of them.
But yeah, thanks for coming in.
Yep, you betcha. And that I'll, I'll just jump right onto that Paint Creek. That one's been great. Good partnership with the county, with Wyoming Game and Fish Department, with Trout Unlimited, with Bureau of Land Management. Couple of years ago, actually got to go out, not last summer, got to go out with the crew and, and we did some electrofishing on Paint Creek. And we've got a, a challenge with some of the fish being able to move up Paint Creek to spawn. And with some of those culverts that are there, oh, come on, Lloyd. And excited for that opportunity to move forward. So yeah, we're at, they're on Paint Creek. I think there's three culverts that are.
That's just unreal that fish will not go up through those.
Well, there's some barriers and especially with water flows, but.
Madam Chair, the other one that I think is kind of slowed or at least put on hold is, have you heard any more, how about, I think it's Lane seventeen Bridge?
That's on hold right now.
Yeah.
You know, your end hasn't been contacted no more.
Nope. And we'll, we'll support all the public access, but especially where that's Bureau of Reclamation land and we're not going to take, you know, ownership of the bridge.
Yeah, their idea was to get back to you guys.
Yep. Well, that, that area is open for, for, for travel and for.
They have another option for getting in there. So we're looking at that.
Okay. Thank you. I, I will say that we currently have no, no pending mining or gravel applications in Park County. So all of those have been processed and worked through and grateful to be a partner, especially with the county on those and, and some of the, the local contractors, but no pending sand and gravel here in Park County. Really excited about and appreciate the help and the work on. We're moving forward with the Twin, Twin Creek Access. Had a good discussion and meeting with the canal board there, and they have signed an agreement for us to be able to put a, a boat bridge over the canal and then have a ramp and a kind of a winch system for people to be able to get boats down to, to the South Fork there, and then they can take boats out. So that will tie us in good from, from Bobcat Houlihan to then Twin Creek, then to Castle, Castle Rock, and then further down to Andy Martin. So we've, in the last couple of years, we've been able to tie all of those together. Of course, trying to respect private property rights and the owners along there, but working with Game and Fish on that to make sure that people are aware of, of the boating laws and the, the river laws and, and other things.
Will that affect the horse crossing there at all?
That, that was a point of discussion of trying to make the, the bridge across horse accessible. But where it was funding that came for boating access and fishing access, we weren't able to tie that in together. And so the horse trail will still go around the siphon. And you know, as well as I do, that a lot of the horse travel is after the water is out of the canal. So I'm guessing people will still cross the canal to be able to access that Twin Creek Trailhead.
Okay.
So, but no, that will still remain open and, and I think that's a great point moving forward. We'll reach out to Backcountry Horsemen. She's shown Backcountry Horsemen and anyone else and see if, if we can work on a horse bridge over it.
Okay.
But yeah, that would be a great opportunity. And I know last year, two years ago, we did quite a bit of trail work there on, on Twin Creek Trail. For that.
Oh, the hill's good.
Good. Good. I'll jump in American Hiking Society. The last two years they have come out, they call it a, a trailcation. And they have a, a group of people that will come out on, and most of them there are retired. And they'll come out and spend their time and then pick a trail and then work on that trail and help improve it. The last couple of years, we've done Sheep Mountain. We know there are some, some challenges on that Sheep Mountain Trail. In fact, I wish Chairman Livingston were here. I've got a couple of questions to ask him about a story I heard with one of his clients, but I will, I will may just have to reach out to him individually. And so, yeah, they rerouted part of the trail last year on Sheep Mountain and made it more, a little more user friendly for horses and for hiking. Yeah. So, and they have, they're going to come out and redo a, a few portions of the trail this year. And we've also been, been contacted by the museum to look at protecting the cabin that's up there on, on top of Sheep Mountain. So that may be in our, in our agenda moving forward. We will see. Commissioner Teal, I'll jump back to Hogan and Luce. Really appreciate the county there and the great work on seven RP and getting that through. And then we were able to utilize some of the, some of the excess material on Hogan and Luce to upgrade that facility. We also did some shoreline restoration, approximately nine hundred linear feet with the wave action that was coming across Hogan Reservoir, and it would chop up that, that bank and cause some erosion. We lost a few cottonwoods. We've been able to put riprap and rocks and other material there to slow that wave action and try and protect that shoreline. They've also put in a fishing pier and we did a shrub planting as kind of a team building day out there. And then now with seven RP, we will see what, what increases there as far as, you know, use and, and trying to make that accessible to the county. Excited to be a partner with the county on the, on, continue to be a partner on the South Fork, on the flat project there. Brian Edwards and the team has been great as we've got the applications. We've done all of our paperwork and then we just stay out of the way and let the county take care of that as they are improving that, that access of the South Fork. But appreciate being a partner there and that we can, we can assist. Last one I'll probably talk about is Outlaw Trails. That has been a great partnership, been a great opportunity, lots of growth out of Outlaw Trails. We've been able to, we signed the NEPA document last year and we've been able to improve some of the trails that were put in without maybe the proper technique. And, and there's a science behind putting those trails in, especially with erosion and the way that they're, they're used. They've improved about two thousand feet of trail. Last summer, we had a national trail day. We had over sixty people attend. I know we had a kind of a trail building workshop that was hosted by the Park County Peddlers. And if my memory serves, we had like ninety people show up to that and just really excited for that moving forward. One of the, one of the, I guess nuggets from it that we weren't expecting is when we had our public meeting a couple of years ago and we had some of the single track motocross riders reach out and wanted to have more of a say in that. Since then, they have now formed a coalition called the Shoshone Trails Coalition. We've signed a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with them for them to be able to recreate and be able to utilize some of those trails. That same group also had the Cow Trail motocross race last year out at Red Lakes. That was on some private property, but also on BLM. We permitted that. And they had a big national race and, and they're, my understanding is they're going to do it every other year with a mountain bike race in between. So this year should be a, a mountain bike race. And then next year we'll be back to the motocross race. And so appreciate that group and their, their passion as we were trying to make some, some tough choices, some tough decisions and keep everyone involved. And that's, you know, with multiple use. A lot of people have us, have a seat at the table. And I think we did a pretty good job of be, being able to include all of them out at Outlaw Trails. And they're still pedal pusher or, yeah, pedal pushers has, has secured a pretty good grant from the state. And we'll continue building trails and working on different things out there. We've got the kiosks up. We've got picnic tables, the, the vault of toilet. And I've tried to make that more of a user friendly. So excited about that as, as it's moving forward.
Just don't let them remove the cairns.
Okay.
Because you lose the trail without those.
Without those. Noted. Yeah. Right now, our, our building is going through a remodel. That's been a little, little hectic.
We know the feeling.
Yes, yes, you do. With the new administration, telework was, was cut immediately. And I'm like, oh, I need telework for when they're tearing out walls and we didn't have restrooms there for a little bit and some of the water, but we've got all that work through. Lessor and the contractor have been great working, working through that. They're going to expand our, our wire yard a little bit and build a new warehouse out in the back so we can park one of our fire engines and then some of the UTVs and whatnot inside. So that's ongoing and we will see when, hopefully that'll finish up May, mid May-ish. It's been a little disruptive, but we, we're still open for business and, and the public have been great coming in and working through that, that contractor dust. So last, last one is really appreciate Josh and the team there at Weed and Pest, Josh and Mary and the rest of the crew. They've been great. We normally have a couple of agreements with them throughout the year to help spray and, and control some of the noxious weeds, especially as they've got a little more capacity and are out and about with their crews. And it just makes sense to tie in the public and the private and, and the state land and everything else. Some of that funding has has been a challenge this year recently, but they've been really good to work with. And, and I think some of it will carry over and we'll see if that loosens up in the future as we move forward. But appreciate that, that partnership as well. So.
What are you doing on? I know your horse roundup was successful.
Are you?
Have the numbers pretty close to where they're supposed to be.
They are. Last report I saw, we were at, we had eleven foals born last year and nine survived. And we had a couple of horses over winter that passed away. So we're still just under one fifty and our appropriate management level, high end of appropriate management level, which in our EA, we said we would manage to is, is a hundred and forty. So we're, we're, we're pretty close.
Okay.
And we'll see what, what happens this spring with the darting program and, and with new foals coming on. So.
Kate, one question on that, you talking about that Sheep Mountain Trail?
Yes, sir.
Working with Lee Livingston.
Yeah.
Working with Lee, we've rolled some pretty bad horse, horse racks and then lazy season cows on that steep section. Is that what they eliminated? Is that really steep?
Yes.
Icy section?
Yes. Yeah, that's what we tried to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause I mean, I got tired of getting off my horse and kicking dirt on all the ice and getting a kind of rock cut.
Yep.
Steep.
Okay.
Yep. They tried to reroute that steep section.
Good.
So. Yeah. Good.
Madam Chair. Kate, the, this was during our last regulations meeting. Some of the public was asking about affordable housing on public land. Has there been any memos that have crossed your desk about possibly getting affordable housing on BLM land?
There have not. I have seen the press release between Secretary of the Interior and HUD, Housing and Urban Development. But I have not seen anything come across my desk or anything. Haven't, haven't heard that in any of our conversations.
We'd rather have you guys approving subdivision.
I don't know that I went to school for that. That would be, that would be interesting. Yeah. I do know they just had a large sale down in Las Vegas that they sold. I can't remember how many acres and it went for, you know, sixteen million or something, but yeah. Since we're talking that type of figures, we did a lease sale for federal minerals in that might've been end of February. We had no parcels nominated in Park County. But as a whole in Wyoming, there were four parcels and it went for a little over six million dollars, which you know, I think bodes well for us putting money back in the treasury as we're trying to move forward with that. But we will have another lease sale coming up in a month, but we don't have any parcels that had, were nominated in Park County for that lease sale.
Who does that nominating?
Typically the oil and gas companies or they will have a consultant. It's kind of, it's an interesting process. We'll just get a random nomination from, sometimes I get them from Florida and it's just random consultants. Sometimes the, the companies do their own. But sometimes it's a consultant from, from wherever they hire them to do.
Just where they want to lease.
Where they want, want to lease and, yep.
Okay. Anything else for? Good to see you.
It's good to see you. Appreciate it. And we'll, we'll be in touch and looking forward to, to hearing about the board and what we can do with the shooting complex moving forward. So.
Okay.
Thanks. I just want to add real quick, just, well, you know, every year we have liaison duty and, and nothing has changed. Ossie and I are still co-leissons with BLM. So if there is a contact person you need to get ahold of, either one of us.
Okay.
Moving forward. Or any of the commissioners as far as that goes.
Well, and, and I try and do that with, when we have controlled burns and other things where we're finished, we won't have any on this side in Park County for the rest of the year. I think we've got some over on the west slope of the Big Horns, but no more here in Park County.
I appreciate those.
Good.
Notes to come in.
I know your, your phone rings just like mine. Keep, keep you on the loop. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Your phone rings just like mine.
Keep, keep you on the loop. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next thing on our agenda is to award scholarships. This award is done on behalf of the University of Wyoming, who supplies the funding for these. We are requested to pick three scholarship winners out of Park County plus a renewal. If they apply for renewal, if they received a scholarship last year, they have the opportunity to apply for one more year. So you've all received those applications and reviewed them over the last two weeks. I do have the totals. I don't know how you want to proceed. I can give you the, the top and.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? So could you or, or hands, review how this funding comes?
It's just provided by the University of Wyoming. Each county and the state receives funding to.
Are we required to give three?
Well, there's three.
Three high schools.
Are you required to give three?
Is it a lump sum amount of money?
So there are three scholarships available to each one of the counties. Each county is, are they required? I mean.
Is there a dollar? I guess my question where I'm going with this is, is say we get fifteen hundred bucks, three five hundred dollar scholarships. Can we give two seven hundred fifties?
No, we can't change the.
The amount is, the amount.
The amount is set. Okay.
What is the, are they each five hundred?
I think they're fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen each.
Yeah, I think they're fifteen hundred. Madam Chair, sorry.
Oh, that's fine. So. We can clarify that, but the the amount. The we each score them on a point system. So when we total the points across So when we total the points across, um. Our number one top. Appears to be Addison Duncan from Cody. Our number two. Would be. McKenna Cannon from Powell. Cannon. And number three. Lucas Legler from Powell. So. Um, and then our renewal scholarships. Our renewal person would be Kelsey Pomaizel from. So with that, um, unless there's any questions, I would entertain a motion to. Those, those four scholarships.
Madam Chair, um. This was. This was sort of hard and easy at the same time. I mean, it was, uh, very good applicants that came through and it was hard to even distinguish. You know, which one is, is more needed or, or which one is more qualified. But the easy part is, is we're not going to make a mistake. That's the nice part about it. So I would nominate, uh. The scholarships go into Addison Duncan, McKenna Cannon, Lucas Legler and Kelsey Pomaizel. As the renewal for our scholarships.
Second. So moved in second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Got to bring it back up again.
Hey, I, I, ever since we've, I've been a commissioner, we've always had the opportunity to give one scholarship to three different school districts within Park County. There's not a lot of difference on the renewal, um, but Matisse is not being represented. In the, in the, in the three new scholarships or the renewal. I'm, and I would. I would like to see Matisse receiving at least the renewal. Score wise, I believe there's only one point difference. In the rubrics. It's just my thoughts.
There were no, I understand that it's a renewal. There were no seniors in the Matisse classes.
I understand. I, I know we have no applicants, so it's, it's difficult. And then that was my point earlier was if, if we could. Um, either use the money next year or if we could double the amount for just the two. For this year, but so you, so, so we had one Powell, one Cody. I'm sorry, Matisse didn't have any applications, but we do have at least a renewal application from Matisse. So I'd like to consider.
Madam Chair.
Changing that.
To tag on to Commissioner Teal, I also had the same thought, um, in looking through this. And so what I did in that too, just to kind of tag on to the Matisse thing, I looked at, um. This is how I scored kind of is what they have so far for scholarships. So if you look at the Matisse person versus the person from Cody. Um, the Cody, um, student, I believe has the, the trustee scholarship, which is basically a full. Tuition and fees at University of Wyoming, where the Matisse does not. So the, the scholarship difference there to me matters as well. And so I think I would kind of echo your. Like the, the financial piece, I would want it to go to someone who has less, I guess. And we would represent Matisse in that way.
Where we get into the criteria, where can, you know, can we look at? You know, the kid's background, are their parents well to do, um, or are these people really? Because there were some on our list that. That it sounded like they were really struggling even go to school. Uh, but you know, for, for, but then you get to the point of also. You know, Cody's bigger school and just because the counselors at Matisse didn't push the, the scholarships on to. Onto the students or, or let them even know that this was available, then.
They have no seniors.
Oh, they have no seniors?
No, they have no seniors in their class.
That was just weird. So I think, uh, you know, if their size, um. The size of the school, it's very competitive, you know, for scholarships as, as opposed to the others. But I, I could go either way with, with the, uh. T C renewals or with the, uh, or with the Cody renewal. So I could, uh. Redo my nomination.
Well, we have a motion on the floor in the discussion, so.
Madam Chair. I would echo what Commissioner Teal and Smalley say. I mean, um, given the fact that the, the Cody renewal has the full ride. Um, I would, I would also like to see that go to, to the Matisse, um, being they didn't have anybody from the T C.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Oh, motion's been withdrawn. Yes. Okay. So, um, question, you want to restate your motion?
Yes, I will. I will nominate for a scholarship Addison Duncan, McKenna Cannon, Lucas Legler. And for the renewal to Kayla Horson of Matisse. Horson.
Horson.
H O R S E.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second on the scholarship. So you've all heard, um, Duncan Cannon, Legler and Horson. Any further discussion on the motion?
I just want, Madam Chair, I just want to echo what Commissioner Mangold said. I think it was really hard. I think, um, what it spoke to me was that we have a lot of outstanding students in Park County. Um, a lot of them with a lot of, um, ambition and obviously great letters of recommendation. I looked a lot at the letters of recommendation and then like I said, the way I went through it was just kind of tried to look at that, their GPA. And then their financial situation. So that's kind of how I made my decision, but I think all of them were excellent applicants. So.
Hey, any other discussion on the motion? Are you none of those in favor?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Which is passes. Yes.
Per, per scholarship. For the year. One year. Madam Chair will, uh. Can we have Kelly? Print some kind of. Award.
Colleen takes care. They have certificates that come from the university that they.
Well, one year I went up there and I had nothing. So.
Oh, you mean at the school?
When you presented at the school.
Cody's always supplied that to me over there when I've handed them there.
I'm just requesting if, if you want me to do the Powell, which we've talked about earlier, I'd like to have hand the kids something.
With Colleen. How and when it goes over to Powell High School. The best thing I could think of.
Madam Chair, you may want to talk to Mrs. Teal about that.
Uh, she's no longer in charge of that.
And Kelly, you'll do, Scott scheduled to do Matisse. Okay. Okay. With that, um, next thing on our agenda is public hearing. Kramer, Erica from our planning and zoning office, uh, public hearing is regarding YO hoofbeats, SUP number two seventy-two request.
Thank you, Madam Chair. YO hoofbeats submitted a special use permit application to request approval of a special use permit to host a concert fundraiser. Use is classified as a special event. The property is owned by Outdoors in Wyoming LLC. And is located approximately 14 and a half miles west of Cody. On the south side of highway 141620 with an address of 3324 North Fork Highway, Cody. The property is in a GR five zoning district and special event uses are allowed in the zoning district provided, provided an SUP is approved. There's a highway commercial business use on the property Yellowstone Valley Inn, YVI and RV Park, which includes a restaurant, bar, lodge and campground. Commercial use of the property has been in place since the mid sixties. The applicant provided a site plan of the proposed parking areas, locations for portable toilets and food trucks. And an existing easement through the property, which cannot be impeded by the use. The application was forwarded to the relevant agencies as required. They responded as follows. A Y dot special event permit is not required. The event shall provide adequate parking and sufficient interior traffic flow to prevent traffic from backing up on the highway. That was from Y dot. Park County Wheaton Pest will not require long-term noxious weed management plan. But does recommend if livestock are brought for the event, that they provide weed free forage for any stock that does not require special diet. The state fire inspector noted the food trucks need to maintain a minimum distance of 10 feet from any and all structures. DEQ summarized notifications, permits and certificates required for various activities. Park County Public Works has no common or concern with the proposed SUP. The treasurer confirmed property taxes are painful. The state electrical inspector confirmed there are no permitting issues to be addressed by their department for this event. He will accompany the state fire inspector during his inspection on May 15th to provide assistance in identifying any safety issues if they are present. No public comments have been received. The applicant made the following statements of how compatibility will be achieved. They stated that noise impacts will be controlled by any music at 10 PM. Approximately five food trucks will be stationed outside minor emissions from food trucks will be confined to the cooking areas. Resulting in minimal and temporary air quality impact. The bar will be inside and operating under the existing YVI liquor license. Outdoor seating will be in designated areas, additional trash bins and eight chemical toilets will be provided. And they will supplement the existing facilities on site. Outdoor lighting is proposed. Um, they're going to rent outdoor lighting from Boone's Machine and Rizzle. And this lighting must comply with our regulations. Domestic water will be provided by YVI's existing public water supply that is regulated by the EPA. You shall not interfere with any irrigation infrastructure or water rights. They are proposing parking within an area that is currently designated for RV camping spaces. The owner has indicated that the RV sites on the east side of the property will primarily be reserved for event parking. And three to four cars should fit in each space. They estimate they can park 150 cars with overflow to the sites along hitching post and Teton Trail within the park. They anticipate low numbers of RVs during this time of year. Eight, we mentioned the chemical toilets, adequate electric service exists at YVI. Temporary signage is proposed to direct guests and minimize any ingress egress traffic congestion. Portion of the property is located in a flood overlay district and for the most part, the event is expected to be outside of the flood plain and will not impact it. Should you choose. Special use permit, we recommend the following conditions. Number one, approval is granted for a one-time concert fundraiser special event is proposed. Number two, the applicant shall ensure that existing in-ground wastewater facilities are not compromised, damaged by any, by an aspect of the use. Traffic movement, parking, et cetera. Number three, the applicant shall ensure that the existing access easement is not impeded by the use. Number four, the applicant shall ensure that parking and access are adequate to support the special event and existing use. While also remaining in compliance with Y dot's requirements. Number five, Park County noise, lighting and other nuisance regulations shall apply. And number six, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards and the Park County Development Standards and Regulations.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I would ask if there's any public comments regarding this SUP proposal?
Question.
If you want to come up, please and identify yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Lorna Klein and we got an invitation to come to this meeting because we're residents in the area. We really appreciate the invitation to, you know, input. Your voice faded a little bit when she was talking about parking.
Okay.
Um, what was about overflow parking?
Um. See exactly what we stated. I think, um, I remember from the site plan though, here we go. So on the east side of the property, that's where they're primarily reserving. And then, um, they estimate they can park 150 cars with overflow to the sites along Hitching Post and Teton Trail. And I believe those are. The site plan here. Oh, wait. Yeah. Those are just interior names of their.
Of their, I, I understand. Then I, I think I heard that, but I, it confused me because I'd never heard of it, those roads. So.
Okay, absolutely.
So you're not planning on any, any overflow parking and on the, um, forbear trailhead?
No.
No. Okay.
No, no, everything will be within.
Okay. Very good. And, um. Okay, that was, that was my main question. We really appreciate. Seen your signs up in the vet's office and so forth. So how many people are you expecting?
So, so I'm actually staff for P O C, but I'm not sure if.
I'm, yeah, we're expecting.
300 people. Okay. Okay. Well, that's all I, I really had a question about the parking because we're pretty close there. And, um, they've had events there before. You probably heard. Um, there was an unannounced, um, thunderous fireworks, um, display. It was actually in June. It wasn't even fourth of July. We had stampeding horses and.
Oh.
Dogs freaking out. So I, again, I really appreciate knowing so we can, you know, be home or not, or, you know. Yeah. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to identify yourself for the record, please. Is there any other public comment regarding this request? Hearing none?
Adam Chair, I move, we close the public hearing.
I can't. I moved in second to do close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? None of those in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed?
Madam Chair, one question. When is the, the event?
May 16th.
May 16th.
May 16th.
You know, one other question. Are neighbors invited? I, I looked for that everywhere and I didn't see it.
It is, it is open to the public and there are ticket sales as it's a fundraiser for flyover feeds. So.
And do we know if there's any like signage on the highway, people coming in, um, the park and?
So I believe they, and Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they'll have interior signs and people at, at each entrance directing, directing traffic. And then some interior signs.
Good clip finally get through Yellowstone and they hit the North Fork and sometimes you see a vent ahead signs.
Madam Chair, um, I was going to add to that. That's a very contentious exit or entrance in there. We've had multiple, multiple crashes or just enough of a hill coming from the west and the east. That it's just a, and so I would like to add as a condition that, um, I know this is a Y dot issue on the highway. But I would like to add a condition that, you know, they have them signs that attach to a, a delineator post, at least maybe a quarter to a half mile ahead. It says that has slowed, you know, metal traffic, because we've had some, well, fatal crashes right there. Okay. And with that amount of traffic in May, that's when the park is open. Everybody wants to go to the park. So I would make a condition seven state that applicants will, um, post warning signs a quarter, uh, a quarter mile. Uh, from each entrance of the, on the east, west side. And you can get those that just, you can get a made cheap vinyl that pop right over delineator post, but I mean.
Okay.
Just knowing the crash we've had there. Without that traffic.
And Commissioner Stewart, is that, um, does, well, they should probably consult Y dot too, I would guess.
Absolutely.
To be sure that.
And Y dot might even be allowed the signs to provide.
They may. Okay, gotcha.
And Madam Chair, I've seen those signs of into head.
Right.
That what Y dot has. So they may even provide those.
Okay.
It's just that one little bit of dip coming headed into town that gets people.
Okay. Any further discussion or do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve a special use permit, uh, two seven two hoofbeats public, uh, or special use. Madam Chair, I move to approve the special use permit, uh, 272 who feeds public, uh, or special use with conditions, staff conditions listed in addition with, uh, Commissioner Stewart's signage, condition number seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the request for the SUP, number 272 for Wyoming Buff Beets, with the conditions listed with the addition of condition for a, uh, event ahead signing within much a quarter mile from each entrance. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, thank you.
Further thinking on that, Madam Chair, I bet you Y dot's gonna want them further out, but that'll be, they can work that out.
It'll be good, yeah. They can kind of make a decision where it needs to go.
Thank you.
So about two minutes.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
10:25. Yeah. The next thing on our agenda is a public hearing regarding Saddlestring Storage Site Plan.
Justin Mast submitted. Justin, can you hear us?
I can hear you now. I couldn't hear you for a second. Sorry.
That's okay. We were, we're getting a little bit of feedback. If you wouldn't mind muting for just the time being. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so they are requesting approval to operate a commercial storage facility consisting of an existing 5,200 square foot wood-sided pole barn, three newly constructed 3,000 square foot buildings, two newly constructed 2,000 square foot buildings, and one newly constructed 6,000 square foot building. Um, approximately 160 storage units will be within those new buildings. The existing structure will be leased as a larger commercial storage unit, which the applicant does not intend to split into smaller units. The total cumulative size of all commercial storage buildings associated with use will be 24,200 square feet. The land area impacted by the proposed use is approximately two acres. Applicable regulations are our 2015 development standards and the terms of a planned unit development agreement that was recorded in the Park County Clerk's Office. Use is classified as commercial storage. The property is owned by Justin Mast and Tiffany Mast. The property is within Planning Area A and is zoned according to this P U D. The P U D was originally established on October 31st, 1995, and on August 19th, 2003, the P U D was revised allowing certain commercial and industrial uses on this property. Commercial storage is one of those uses allowed by the amendment. And then recently, on December 4th, 2024, the P U D was amended to allow earth-toned metal-sided buildings on this lot 3B on the property. The property is located approximately 1,800 feet east of the municipal boundary of Cody on the east highway, uh, on the east side of Highway 120 South at the end of Ginger Lane. Neighboring land uses are commercial, residential, and exempt Park County lands. Commercial lands are primarily to the west across the highway. The northeast part of the property is developed with a log home, which is subject to a life estate agreement, a garage, shed, and septic system. Relevant agencies were notified as required and responded as follows. The Park County Treasurer's Office confirmed property taxes have been paid in full. Game and Fish has no terrestrial wildlife comments. The state electrical inspector confirmed no plan review for electrical safety is required. State Fire Marshal requires the fire, that fire apparatus access be within 150 feet of all portions of the building. Nothing is needed by Cody Canal. Park County Weed and Pest will not require a long-term noxious weed management plan, but recommend adhering to best management practices for controlling the spread of noxious weeds. Park County Public Works reported the applicant shall consult with Y dot regarding the existing approach to Ginger Lane from the highway to make sure it is adequate to serve the planned development. Ginger Lane is a designated private roadway, and the development will increase traffic on Ginger Lane. That should be noted that there is potential for increased traffic, dust, and disturbance on Ginger Lane, and the applicant is encouraged to work with adjacent landowners and improving and maintaining Ginger Lane as needed. The storage facility will need to be addressed through Park County Public Works. Separate address points for each of the individual buildings may be obtained. They, regarding parking, the possibility of having more than just a handful of vehicles on site at any given time is not realistic. As long as there exists at least 24 feet of crushed gravel surface around the perimeter and 24-foot of crushed gravel in front of the storage unit doors, most people have sufficient room to get in, load, and/or unload. The site drainage plan prepared by Mr. Metzger has been reviewed and is hereby approved by the county engineer. DEQ provided information pertaining to permits required for construction activities. Y dot has no issues with the proposed use or highway access via Ginger Lane. A soils report from Cody Conservation District was received. The soils are rated somewhat limited to very limited regarding dwellings with or without basements due to shrink swell and depth to soft bedrock, and very limited regarding septic tank absorption fields due to depth of saturated zone and slow water movement. Neither soil type is considered prime farmland. An adjacent landowner expressed concern at the P and Z Commission Public Hearing over maintenance and snow removal on Ginger Lane to accommodate the use of the storage facility. Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the site plan application and continued the hearing, at which time they recommended approval with conditions finding the proposed use is consistent with the basic site plan standards and the special state site plan standards. Uh, since then, the applicant has provided road maintenance agreement signed by all landowners on Ginger Lane to the Planning and Zoning Department. The property is served by NRWD. However, no water expansion of the current system is needed for this proposed use. No sewage disposal or expansion of the existing, um, septic system is needed for the commercial storage project. On-site dumpster containers will be placed, serviced, and maintained by a local refuse company. All tenants will be required to sign a lease stating they will not and cannot store any known hazardous material on site. The property is connected to power, gas, and phone service. The development will avoid all recorded utility easements as shown on the site plan, and the newly constructed storage units will not be connected to utilities. Signs are proposed and will be on site. The applicant will need to submit permit applications and comply with Park County sign regulations and the P U D sign requirements. The applicant has provided a drainage and erosion control plan, and that's been approved by the county engineer. Uh, regarding the P U D performance standards, parking areas, um, the applicant has proposed a parking plan that they feel should satisfy the intention of the P U D's requirements and Park County's Development Standard Regulations, creating a practical solution that reflects the typical usage patterns of a self-storage facility. The property shall be maintained free of junk from view of any adjacent private property or rights of way. No building or structure will exceed a height of 30 feet. Any proposed lighting on the buildings will be located within nine feet of the ground and will be shielded to avoid light pollution to neighboring properties. All proposed signs must comply with standards above the standards within and be permitted by Park County Planning and Zoning. Uh, siding for the new structures will be metal and earth-toned. Um, that is in accordance with the amendment, um, in 2024 that allows that. This perfor, oh, floor space, the, this performance standard applies only to professional and contractors off the space and does not apply to that proposed use. New construction shall meet the minimum requirements of the most recent edition of the Uniform Building Code. And building and structure shall be placed within, or placed a minimum of 20 feet from all property lines and public rights of way. Should the Board of County Commissioners approve the Saddlestring Storage Site Plan, staff recommends the following conditions. Number one, prior to commencing construction, the applicant shall obtain a building zoning permit for each building and sign to be constructed to serve the use. Number two, the applicant shall comply with state and federal laws regarding the handling, storage, and disposal of hazardous substances on the property. And number three, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards and the Park County Development Standards and Regulations and the term standards and provisions set out in the P U D agreement, with particular attention to signs, outdoor advertising, parking, nuisances, and lighting, setbacks, building setbacks, junk height restrictions, aesthetic standards, and building standards, U B C. Thank you. If you have any questions?
Questions for staff?
Madam Chair? Are we still public? Okay.
It's up to you. If your question's for staff, go ahead.
Okay, um, you mentioned the, uh, earth-tone siding, and I know last time it had to be wood siding. And then you mentioned this 2000, is that the 2004, um, amendment?
The 2024, yes, yes.
How does that work? Did that go to all the other people within that?
Yes, and they did, uh, obtain signatures from all of, all of the other owners. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I didn't mention that, and it isn't fair.
Um, Jenny, I just had a question. It, it's just mentioned, and I don't know that it's this big of a deal, but I'm curious because, um, Road and Bridge recommended considering a name change due to location for emergency services access, and the road is not Saddlestring, and so it might be conflicting with Saddlestring Road. Did the applicant give a reason for not, or?
I don't believe we actually covered that, and we can, um, we can discuss that with Justin.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it. I didn't know that. I wasn't aware of that at all, but it wouldn't bother me to change the name. I'm not stuck on it.
I'm, I'm not suggesting we do. I just, I, I just noted that, um, the county engineer had mentioned that as an emergency services consideration, so.
Okay. I'm flexible on that. If that needs to be done, I'm happy to do it.
This is a public hearing? Is there any public here to comment on this request? Any public here to comment? Or is there a time? Is there any public here to comment on this request?
Madam Chair, I move we close public here. Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Flaring to the board?
Madam Chair, move to approve the Saddlestring Storage Site Plan, condition noted. Second.
I moved and seconded to approve the request with the conditions as listed. Any discussion on the motion?
I just, Madam Chair, just have a question in follow-up to my question. If they, if the applicant did decide to change the name, does he have to amend this whole thing all over again? If we approve it today?
I don't think that would be a problem.
He could just change it without having to go through the process.
Yes.
Just so he, he knows as a consideration.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Justin.
Thank you, Jenny.
Hey, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, so we have a break until 11 o'clock.
And that's a break. Thank you.
So.
So the next thing on our agenda is actually a proclamation regarding the two lights for tomorrow. The celebration for America's 250th, which we'll get into a little bit more here in a little bit. But first I'll ask Commissioner Mandel to read the proclamation.
Free of charge. Madam Chair, whereas Park County Wyoming recognizes the importance of honoring and commemorating the 250th anniversary of the founding of our nation and reminding our citizens of the vital significance and relevance of our founding principles and ideals that created a unique national identity worth fighting for. And whereas the event of 1775 that began the revolution the year before independence was declared, are significant moments that signal the creation of the national identity and unity of purpose that transcended traditional geographic, cultural, and societal divides. And whereas individuals and communities across all of the colonies came together to support their fellow countrymen. Whereas on the evening of April 18th, 1775, with impending hostile action from the British Army in Boston, Massachusetts, Paul Revere and William Dawes, along with other alarm riders, undertook a perilous ride to alert everyone in the countryside of the coming danger. And whereas preceding the departure from Boston, a pre-arranged signal was set in the Old North Church steeple to ensure that the message got out and did not solely rely on just one or two alarm riders. And whereas the two lanterns that were the signal were immortalized in Henry Wadsworth Longfellow's poem, Paul Revere's Ride as one if by land and two if by sea, and have become an enduring symbol of American vigilance, perseverance, preparedness in the face of adversity. And whereas those alarm riders and the citizens that answered the call to arms to serve and defend their fellow countrymen that night and the following day at the battles of Lexington and Concord, exemplified the spirit of community and shared responsibility that has defined our nation since its inception. And whereas we are reminded 250 years later that the call for unity and the call to serve each other is no less relevant today than it was then. And whereas a national initiative has been proposed through collaboration from multiple states, that two lights be displayed in public spaces across the country for all to see marking the significant anniversary in April 2025 and the beginning of the 250th anniversary commemorations leading up to the Declaration of Independence on July 4, 2026. And whereas state commissions, state governments, federal agencies, and community heritage and historical organizations across the country have eagerly endorsed the initiative and pledged to support, participate, and have encouraged others to do the same. And whereas some participating entities have also pledged to encourage a day of community service on April 19th, 2025 as a way to encourage understanding about the true meaning of these historical commemorations, knowing that these events are not just marking history for history's sake, but rather encouraging reflection on the idea that all of these historic events were endeavoring toward one common goal, the chance for a better tomorrow together. Now therefore, our county commissioners do hereby endorse the Two Lights for Tomorrow National Initiative and call on all citizens to unite in remembrance of our shared history, honoring the sacrifices made by those who fought for our independence and reminding ourselves of the values we hold dear today. Furthermore, we encourage all government buildings, community centers, public spaces, and all citizens to take part in this symbolic display of prominently displaying two lights for all to see the night of April 18th, 2025, and reflect on how those lights shining out in the darkness during this vigil symbolically illustrate our ongoing journey as a nation.
Less than five minutes, right?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I can see why you asked him to read it.
I knew better.
Well done.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll hear more about that in just a few minutes. In the meantime, we do have a public hearing to do. Jenny, quickly. So Jenny Kramer and Erica with Park County Planning and Zoning, public hearing on Happy Days Minor Subdivision Number 86 Sketch Plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. David Bucher submitted a minor subdivision application to request approval of a partial vacation and re-subdivision of Lot 1A of the amended plat of simple subdivision SS-11 into a two-lot subdivision consisting of one 2.64 acre lot and one 2.65 acre lot, each for residential use. The subdivision is classified as a minor subdivision, and it is subject to an annexation agreement and agreement for extension of municipal sewer services with the City of Powell, and review and comment from the City of Powell is required. The City of Powell previously allowed for a septic system to be placed on Lot 1A. The property is in a rural residential two acres zoning district, and the lot size, the lot sizes as proposed are consistent with that zoning district. It is located approximately 725 feet northeast of the City of Powell, east of County Road 8, on the north side of County Lane 8. The property is currently unaddressed. Proposed Lot 1 is developed with a recently constructed permitted single-family residence and small wastewater system. Domestic water wells have been drilled on each proposed lot. Neighboring land uses are ag, residential, and industrial lands. Lot 2 of SS-11 is north of the property, and the first development park is south of the proposed subdivision. Municipal review is required. Relevant agencies were notified as required and responded as follows. MDU has gas service available by an existing main on the north side of Lane 8 that conserve both lots. They can install service lines once a structure is erected and service is requested. TCT may have the availability to provide services, providing line of sight to a TCT tower exists. And they request a possible utility easement on the lots for TCT to deploy any future fiber optics to the sites, to the lots. Park County Fire Protection District 1 can provide fire suppression and request all access points are constructed to accommodate their fire equipment. Park County School District 1 will have bus stops at all exit points onto Lane 8. Toshon Irrigation District will require lots to sprinkle irrigate, and a standard USBR right-of-way will be shown for the four-seat pipeline. Park County Weed and Pest inspected the property, and a long-term noxious weed management plan will not be required since only minor amounts of noxious weed species were present and ground disturbance has already taken place. Keel Sanitation can provide garbage services. USPS can deliver mail to the lots. Game and Fish has no terrestrial wildlife comments. The treasurer confirmed property taxes have been paid. Powell Clark's Fork Conservation District provided a soils report. The soil type on the property is rated not limited regarding dwellings with or without basements and small commercial buildings. It is considered prime farmland if irrigated. Due to slow water movement, the soil is considered somewhat limited with regard to septic tank absorption fields. The City of Powell representative stated they have no information or request to report to the county after the Development Review Committee and Planning and Zoning meetings. The right-of-way is 80-foot, which coincides with the city master street plan requirements for Collector Street as that county road is designated for the future. The City of Powell Administrator is unwilling to provide a letter, a new letter, signed by the Powell mayor, clarifying that the city will allow septic systems on both lots now that the property has been split. They feel the letter regarding Lot 1A that was provided previously should be adequate. Park County Public Works provided information from their review. Legal access is by direct access to County Lane 8. All new access points must be permitted by Public Works. There are existing and approved access points, there are existing and approved access points to both of the proposed lots at this time. Individual lot owners can establish address points by submitting a request for address to Public Works. A drainage and erosion control plan is not required at this time. However, in no case shall development result in an increase in stormwater runoff to the county right-of-way or adjacent properties. Rocky Mountain Power confirmed power services adjacent to each proposed lot, and a transformer has been put in place for a two-meter service. No new roads or shared driveways are proposed. A high-water table has been evidenced on the property. No other hazardous features are known to exist on the property. Perk test was completed on Lot 1. The rate was 10 minutes per inch. A groundwater exploration cut was made to approximately eight feet, and groundwater was discovered at seven foot six inches. The small wastewater administrator recommends the applicant place the following note on the final plat. High groundwater conditions may be present, and engineered systems may be required. Domestic water is proposed by onsite wells that have already been drilled and permitted. A water sample was analyzed from the existing well on proposed Lot 1, and the results indicate the water quality in the area is adequate. Total coliform and E. coli bacteria were absent. Nitrate was reported at 5.67 milligrams per liter. That's below the maximum contaminant level of 10. However, annual monitoring is recommended at this level, although their water analytes tested were satisfactory. Domestic water requirements have been met. An approved water distribution plan is required from Toshon Irrigation. An HOA will not be required unless common facilities maintained by lot owners are proposed. It appears livestock can be legally run at large on lands adjacent to the proposed subdivision. Therefore, it is subject to Wyoming Statute 18-5-319. And the applicant has provided an affidavit stating that a legal fence as prescribed by the statute is in place around the perimeter of the proposed subdivision. It is not within any overlay district. Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the sketch plan, and they recommended approval with conditions. And approval standards requirements pertaining to sketch plan review have been met. Planning staff recommends approval of the sketch plan of Happy Days MS-86 with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall provide all easements as requested by applicable utilities and special districts. Irrigation districts or public agencies providing services. The width of any utility easement shall be sufficient to allow adequate maintenance of the system, but in no case shall such utility easement be less than 20 feet in width. Easements must be identified on the final plat. Number two, with the final plat application, the applicant shall submit an appropriate subdivision improvements agreement, if required, addressing all applicable required improvements for review by staff and approval of the county attorney as to form an approval of the board. Prior to final plat review by the Board of County Commissioners, the applicant shall place the following note on the final plat. Any proposed water wells on the subdivision lots shall be permitted by the Wyoming State Engineers Office prior to installation. Number four, prior to final plat review by the Board of County Commissioners, the applicant shall place the following note on the final plat. High groundwater may be present, and engineered systems may be required. Number five, prior to final plat review by the Board of County Commissioners, the applicant shall place a notice of the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act of 1991 on the plat. And number six, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations, and the minimum subdivision requirements is set forth in Wyoming Statute 18-5-306.
Thank you. Questions for staff at the moment?
Madam Chair, looking at the difference between Planning and Zoning Commission conditions and staff conditions, is there, why did we not include Condition 3 and Condition 10 from Planning and Zoning Commission?
Let me see, 3. Oh, because the city was unwilling to provide a new letter? So we don't have, we don't have a letter with an approval date for the allowance of a septic system on both lots? I guess we could note the first letter, because that's their opinion that it is approval of both lots? It's a good thought. And then, I'm sorry, what was the other number?
10. Oh. I think that was missed. Yeah. Okay.
I'm not picking on you. I'm just, you know, I stood corrected in a meeting not too long ago. They said they're identical, and they're not. I know that sometimes conditions are met ahead of time, and that was the reason there are difference. But that's not always the case. I'm pointing that out today. I don't have a problem with either one of the conditions.
No, but I think, nope, I think that was the case of we were rushing through this. So.
Madam Chair, Jenny, I thought in the report, though, the nitrate level was less than five, which wasn't considered high.
Um, it is, it's still considered high. It's not over that maximum contaminant level. However, they recommend annual monitoring, because if it's, if the sample were taken during, during certain times of the year when fertilizers maybe leach more, that a lot of times it could be elevated to the, to the dangerous level for infants.
So those probably do need to be.
So it's probably a good idea. It just puts people on notice.
So we're talking about adding Condition 7? Is that what I'm understanding?
I think, Anne, yes.
Do you want to add the condition on a secondary letter?
And so we put the recording information for for the City of
City of Powell Letter.
Powell Letter.
And this is a public hearing, so is there anybody from the public that is here to address this Happy Days Minor Subdivision 86 Sketch Plan? You identify yourself for the record, please.
Madam Chair, Cody Schatz with Engineering Associates. I'm a representative of the applicant. Happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, I have one question for Cody. The first development park just south of that doesn't have any city services either.
I mean, I think it's actually the
Yeah, I don't know. All we know is the sewer, we've been in front of you guys before on the sewer one. As you try to run it back to Road 8, the elevation doesn't work to get it back up to the So that was what the holdup on it. Honestly, I don't know if the one below it does or not. If it does, it must be coming out further south to find that line up to Road 8.
Is there anyone else here from the public that would like to speak to this this year? Anyone else from the public?
Madam Chair, we close the public hearing.
Second.
We moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Motion passes. Those are the board.
Madam Chair. I make a motion. We approve Happy Days MS-86 with conditions, including the addition of Condition 7.
S7, or did you want?
And, and, and 8.
And 8, I'm sorry.
Being the recording of the letter. Okay.
Thank you.
Sir, a second?
Second.
We moved and seconded to approve request for Happy Days Minor Subdivision 86 Sketch Plan with conditions and the addition of Condition 7 and 8. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cody.
I think we're close enough, ladies.
You bet.
Although she doesn't look like Ryan. Hey, next thing on our agenda, Jennifer Thomas, Park County Travel Council, Cody, Chamber of Commerce. Discussion on America's 250th anniversary.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for having us. Mostly, I just wanted to give you an update. This is a committee, the Park County Steering Committee for America's 250 that you guys authorized later last year. So I wanted to just give you a standing update after the proclamation. I've given you an invitation for the event on April 18th that we will be hosting to commemorate the Two Lights for Tomorrow campaign. It should be fabulous. There'll be costumes and everything, including Dossie in a costume. I also want to introduce Macy Hopkins. She's a new vent coordinator at the chamber, and she'll be working on this project. We have submitted our initial funding request from the state for the America's 250 Park County Committee. We haven't received the funding yet, but we anticipate that it will be approved. That initial expense is $10,000, or initial funding is $10,000. $2,000 of that will go to preliminary event planning, assessments on what we want to do, booking deposits of $3,000, and then $5,000 subcontracting administration from the chamber, project management, all that kind of stuff. Already, we have in the works several different things, including the Two Lights for Tomorrow. Already, we have in the works several different things, including the Two Lights for Tomorrow. We are working on a trail behind the Buffalo Bill Center of the West that will be a historic extension of the Paul Stock Trail that will have commemorative signage and be groomed as a, a standing trail that can be used. We're working on, uh, now I just forgot, the Flags of Honor campaign with the historical, uh, what's the museum downtown? The little museum, the Cody Heritage Museum, where they, they've done it in the past where they had hundreds of flags throughout the park. So we'll be doing that again probably this year and definitely next year, selling those flags. We are working on an anniversary celebration for the one hundredth anniversary of the Hayden Arch Bridge, doing a small celebration out there. We are working on a public art displays throughout the community. All the different towns in the community, we're looking at a chuck wagon cookoff. We're trying to pull together some farm to table dinners, lots of fun events. So just wanted to give you guys an update, invite you to this particular event on the eighteenth, give you an update on where the committee stood and the things that we have in the works. And then we're also meeting with every, I think it's every organization. It feels like on my calendar, every organization in town to tell them what we're doing and to get them involved. Either a service organization may be helping to groom the trail or like the Heritage Museum with the full flags of honor will be helping them put that together. So if you're aware of anything else that would fall under the America's Two Fifty campaign, that's right. Thank you. Including businesses, not just organizations, Cody Craft Brewing is the official beer sponsor of Park County American Two Fifty. They will be creating a special beer for the year and will have commemorative cans to commemorate the event and then donating proceeds of those cans to help pay for fireworks throughout the celebrations. We're also looking at a drone show in addition to the standard fireworks show. So lots of fun things coming. And we're continuing to look for ideas that we can support and just really make it an amazing year that starts April eighteenth. Happy to answer any questions, but mostly just wanted to give you an update.
Jennifer, thank you. This is, I think it's really good. My only question is, it, it seems a little bit more focused on Cody and I wondered if there's any collaboration with Powell, Matiti, or any events planned for those areas of Park County as well.
Yes. So we have representation on the steering committee from both communities. The farm to table dinner that we're talking about would be in Powell, down the main street of Powell. Brandy at the museum, the Homestaller Museum is on the committee and very active in planning that. And some of the other events, they're just not as finalized yet. I've reached out to both of those communities for the Two Lights for Tomorrow campaign also. I'm not sure where that stands with them. We haven't made much progress, but we're talking about potentially a street dance and or cattle drive in Matiti during the week of the fourth of next year. So yeah, they're in the loop. It's just all herding cats.
Anything else? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
See you on the eighteenth.
I have no idea, your friend.
Adopt the resolution.
I don't remember ever doing a motion for proclamation. Sure.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Two Lights for Tomorrow proclamation as presented by Commissioner Angold for Park County.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mangled has a good radio voice. You should read it on the radio.
We're actually having somebody read it at the event if you're available. Although you do have to wear a costume. I can get you a revolutionary war dress, just like I got Dossie.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you on the eighteenth.
You can't let Mangled go through the reading and not officially adopt it.
Yeah.
I could have submitted it for your approval.
I have no idea. And by the way, Jennifer wrote it.
She did. It was excellent.
Was it approved to form?
No.
Jennifer's been writing. He wrote it. The proclamation?
A sample was provided and it was edited.
Thank you. Tonight.
Which should be in your inbox for.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I just edited one part where it says, whereas the Park County Wyoming.
I noticed that.
The only editorial I did on it.
The next one isn't a public.
I'd use telephone.
The next one's not a public hearing. So.
No, you sleep it out in the audience.
I had two glowing remarks in here. But what else would you expect from me?
Oh, they, okay. I don't think they've still turned it. I think they've been in once.
Kelly, was this what you were listening to?
Because Nick sent this over late yesterday, but.
When you texted me, I'm like.
And Nick's actually a binderless, but Brian will leave your link.
Is this what you're looking for?
Or was it the new updated issue coming? Well, we should wait.
Questions either. It's a surprise. But, uh, it was just that they had an easement on here, but.
We'll give it a couple minutes. He's usually early to things, but. You don't have to get, I just wanted. Have you heard anything from the shooting complex north of town? Have they brought in there?
They brought in.
Yes.
Yes.
So we have a preliminary plan from them for what they want to do with the new.
I have honestly haven't even had a chance to look at it, but yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The question is, have they brought in the plan for the original part?
Does it, or does it include? Cause they never did. They even have a, I should be for the original.
Yeah.
The thought was we weren't going to prove the, the new one unless they did something with the old one.
They had to show an overall plan, was what we said, an overall plan.
Right.
Right. Yeah, lease renewal is coming up directly. Is that right? Or?
It probably is because it's been a couple of years.
Okay. I, I do remember something about.
Okay. Well, we'll check into it again. Yeah, we need to get something done.
Yeah. Okay. Next thing on our agenda, Jenny and Erica from the Planning and Zoning Department, amended plat of French simple subdivision number two fifty-four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brian and Carrie Peters, the owners of Lot One French SS dash two five four and Daniel and Patricia Brennan, the owner of the adjacent parcel, submitted an amended plat application to request approval of a boundary line adjustment between Lot One of French SS dash two five four and the adjacent unplanted property to the north. Original Lot One is ten point five seven acres and will become Lot one oh one and thirty point eight zero acres subsequent to the boundary line adjustment. The original plat of French SS dash two five four was approved on January fifteenth, twenty nineteen by the board. The properties are located approximately twelve miles west of Powell and nine miles west of Ralston on the east side of Rattler Road. Lot One has a physical address of sixty-three Rattler Road. The Brennan parcel is not addressed. Lot One is developed with a permitted shop residence accessory building and septic system. The Brennan parcel is vacant irrigated land. The subdivision is in the GRP zoning district and the lot configuration is consistent with that zoning district. Agency referral requirements have been met and responded as follows. Park County Public Works has no comments or concern. Park County Treasurer's Office stated property taxes are paid in full. Park Mountain Irrigation reviewed and approved both the water rights distribution plan and a modification to move a district delivery. Park County Weed and Pest has no concerns as no noxious weed species were found. The land within the area of adjustment is not located within an overlay district. No public comments have been received. The plat review committee reviewed the amended plat and a revised amended plat was received. Since there is separate ownership of the vacated portion of the plat, instruments shall be recorded conveying ownership of the individual lots resulting from the amended plat. And the amended plat meets the requirements outlined in our regulations. Staff recommends approval of the amended plat of French SS dash two five four with the following conditions. Number one, prior to recording the amended plat, the applicant shall provide ownership conveyances of the individual lots resulting from the amended plat to the Park County Planning and Zoning Department for recording immediately after the amended plat or if closing at a title company is required for the land transaction to be recorded upon closing. Number two, following board approval of the plat, the applicant shall, in the presence of a planning and zoning department staff member, record the plat and all required supporting documents in the office of the Park County Clerk. And number three, the applicant shall comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations and the minimum subdivision requirements as set forth in Wyoming statute eighteen dash five dash three oh six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is not a public hearing. Are there any questions for staff? Okay. It's a pleasure, the board.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the amended plat of the French subdivision two five four with staff recommendations.
Second.
I moved and seconded to approve the amended plat of French simple sub number two fifty-four with staff recommendations. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we will recess for, recess for lunch. We'll be back at one fifteen.
Hey, Brian. Just put that hundred dollars in the mail.
Okay, being 115, the next thing our agenda today is the long awaited appointment of state shooting complex joint powers board members. First, I'd look at the draft bylaws that were sent in to kind of give us a guideline and the county is responsible for appointing six people to the joint powers board. One from local government, one from the firearms industry, one from the Buffalo Bill Center of the West, one from travel and tourism, one from business economic development, and one at large. So those are the ones we have listed. We also will determine which of those will be one year seats, two year seats, and three year seats. Then after that, the renewal appointments will all be three-year terms according to the bylaws that they have proposed. So with that, we did our interview. Did interview nine people. We've had two that have dropped out, one being Representative Paul Hoff, who has determined that now that he is appointed from the LSO office to be on the oversight committee, it would be a conflict for him to also be on the board. So we will remove that name from our list and Jennifer Toma from the chamber has removed her name from the list also as she was just asking to participate if we needed people to help make the transition from the working group to the actual joint powers board. So with that, I guess we can kind of work through this. I'm not sure how to go about that, but first we could put who we want in the positions and then we'll worry about the length of terms.
Madam Chair, one person that really stood out on the interviews that I think would give credibility to the joint powers would be Cindy Thomas, possibly to serve as the at-large position. One of the reasons I I like, I just like to beat her. She has such an extensive background, competition and teaching. So she could fit into just about any one of these categories, but I think that she would bring a lot of credibility to the joint powers board.
Okay. I will say on the, on the work with, with Cindy, as most of you are aware, she owns two properties here, but does not live here yet. She will be moving here as of the 19th of April and she must be an elector of Park County, according to the bylaws, proposed bylaws. I've talked to her about that or Glenn has quite extensively and she will be in the office the first day she's back to get that done. So we can appoint her provisional on that paperwork being done, but I think we'll be fine.
Madam Chair, I agree 100% with Commissioner Mangold. However, that's, I, I, we may need that at-large position. So before we appoint her to a specific, let's Am I wrong or is there, there one easy fit here and that's Daniels?
Daniel, yeah, Daniel Michael is
We have a category that the House comes from Buffalo Bill Center of the West, to me is the only option.
Right.
Policy for that.
Right. So That takes one down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to do one at a time or
Topic list on the, on the bylaws.
I
Work our way down.
Okay. I was trying to knock the easy ones off.
Well, that's about
Well, I guess we can. That's fine.
The next one is local county. I did have a conversation with Daryl to see if he'd be interested also. Being a county, I'm a little bit thought processes, I guess, on having a commissioner on there because I'm thinking that there may be some things come back and forth with what they need and, and getting the road and all of those things done could be. So that's why I was thinking maybe Daryl with his law enforcement background and the ability to talk to him a little bit about what law enforcement might need at the shooting complex that, and he's agreed that he would do it if we asked him to. So.
He interviewed well.
Yeah, he did. In about five minutes.
I see he's a Park County Sheriff, so he has a lot of free time.
So Madam Chair, are your thoughts moving forward then to do these one at a time then? I think that would be
Okay, that's fine. We'll work through it.
Is that a motion?
No.
No.
Okay, that's the top of the list.
So do you want to do, like make a motion to approve Scott, I mean Sheriff Stewart to the county?
You want to move on each one of them?
I would.
Okay. Let's go back then.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Daryl Stewart, Joint Powers Board for County, Local County Government Representative. With term limits to be determined.
Yeah.
Second.
I moved and seconded to appoint Daryl Stewart to the local government position on the state shooting complex joint powers board.
Madam Chair, I want to explain.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Yes. Hey, we did have another one that you brought up to begin with, with, we'll get that done.
Okay. If I could then, Madam Chair, I move to appoint Daniel Michaels to the shooting complex joint If I could then, Madam Chair, I move to appoint Daniel Michaels to the shooting complex joint powers board representing education, conservation, and shooting industry from the Buffalo Bill Center of the West.
Second.
I moved and seconded to approve Daniel Michael for the position representing the Buffalo Bill Center of the West. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Going down the list, this next one's kind of open firearms and shooting industry is the next thing on the list. I found that Carrie Pay.
Madam Chair, I think we have, was there maybe two, Jason Byer and Carrie Pay, because Jason Byer would have been potential.
I, Madam Chair, Jason Byer, he, he's the one, if you'll remember, has that podcast for
He works for Gunworks.
Gunworks. I mean, I, I believe that fits the criteria. He's, he's one that could have went to a couple of different directions as well, but I liked his, he's young, he I mean, I'm open for, we have all good ones.
Yeah.
I just think he can bring some technology to promotion, promoting the, the complex down the road.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, can we, will you refresh me a little bit? I'm, I pulled up Carrie Pays. I apologize because I don't have my notes from that interview with me.
He's worked with the firearms industry in Cody 14 years, eight part-time, six full-time years. Cody Mercantile does part and been with the firearms industry, very familiar with that. Familiar with the venue, he's been out there to look at that. The thoughts when we talked to him, we have down firearms industry or at-large.
So he has a lot of, sounds like a lot of knowledge and experience.
Madam Chair, if I may, I think with his experience with the podcast and all the stuff he's done.
That's Jason?
Yeah, okay. In the industry, I mean, I think he's, I think he'd be top notch because he's, I think he's got the, the technology and the communication and the the podcast stuff to really promote this. So I think it'd be, he could, he has the sense to build websites and promote. So I mean, that's, that's kind of my where I'm at.
Madam Chair. Yes, to me, for this joint powers board, it's going to be crucial because to me, the most important thing right now is going to be getting these sponsorships. Right? Because they, they have to make the difference up. And so I'm looking at who's going to be more connected and able to network to get those. And so that's, it's kind of, I think both of these candidates are good. It's just who's going to have the connection, the network, and the skill set to do that. And I don't know if one of them possessed more of that.
So Madam Chair, was Carrie the one that focused on groups? Which, we interviewed one person that they put together instead of individual shoots, they, they helped organize clubs to bring, you remember that?
That was a woman, I think, that was applying for a, a local board. Wasn't that a board?
I think it was.
Yeah.
That was, wasn't
No, wrong group.
Wrong group.
Okay, I guess, what do you want to do?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to be appoint Jason Byer to where I'm at.
Firearms.
Firearms. I was trying to look at the word.
Second.
Motion and second to appoint Jason Byer under the firearms industry category.
Madam Chair, just as an item of discussion, since we have a motion and a second, I just have one question. So Jason Byer works for Gunworks. Is there any conflict with that being on the state shooting complex that we're not thinking of?
I guess, Madam Chair, what I would say, I wouldn't see a conflict because it's not a competing industry with gunworks like that, but I think with the connections and certainly I can, I can almost guarantee probably the first sponsor we're going to, that the complex will have will probably be Gunworks. But it's not a competing industry. And in talking to Jason, I mean, there's probably a good chance he would bring in, right now, I talked to not Jason, but Daryl at Gunworks, right now they're going out to a chunk of property on Hart Mountain and it's having these, they'll bring in a thousand people a year to shoot, but it's not ideal where they're at. Where you think that they're, what they will bring in, and I'm not sponsoring Gunworks, I don't own Gunworks, but I think they're willing to move them thousand people out here to this range and bring in that income. So I guess that would be an attorney question, but I don't, I don't, I don't see a conflict because it's not a competing industry.
Madam Chair, I, I just thought I had read somewhere and I can't find it now, that does Gunworks host shooting events? Do they have an onsite shooting events place?
Yeah, they go out to fire.
Oh, I see where you're possibly going with this.
That's why I was wondering.
Their own, I think they're testing their
Okay.
market, though. I'm not sure they're open shoots.
Well, they do open shoot, but they're shooting on Priscilla Bell's place. It's just out in Sagebrush.
Well. We have a motion in front of us for Jason Byer for the firearms industry slot. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to post?
I just, Madam Chair, I just would feel, I just feel like if there was, if I had clarification, I'd feel better to vote, but since I don't, I'm going to vote no, because I don't have clarification.
So three, fast, motion passes.
Madam Chair, the representative for the travel and tourism industry, I've talked to Glenn Ross quite a few times. He has been a big part of doing the lobbying and getting it organized. Plus, he has a money background and has, has as Commissioner Simone has said, that it's going to be a fundraising effort to start with, and I think he would be the one that could start that. I think he would be a good money man to have on, on the board.
He would be. He's, he'd be excellent. His email, last email to me 24 hours ago was, he will do everything in his power to help the board and raise funds. Would rather not be a board member, declined completely, would rather not be a board member as he's going to be gone all summer. I can forward it to you. No, he'd be perfect, but he's and, and I think some of our working group is going to stick around no matter what, but Glenn has obviously said he really wants to get this fundraising done and will help with it any way he can. But was it true that he would be able to fit with the board with being gone all summer because he won't get in that initial stuff? So I
Well, my second one on that list was Brian Mick. I think he had a money background too, that I
That's true.
Had put down my notes.
Economic and tourism, that's what I have on my notes too.
Brian Mick, if I'm correct, also has a legal background?
Part-time lawyer. Party cover board member, shotgun sport. We talked about the collegiate side. Alternative options for tourism. Any other thoughts there? Brian Mick?
For?
Tourism and travel.
What did we have in mind for economic development?
That's an interesting one too.
I almost think, Madam Chair, that Brian would fit better under economic development and business because he's highly into multi-business type stuff.
Now, Madam Chair, I don't disagree with you at all, but I, are you considering, if, I, I, I really want Glenn on there, but if he's already said he's not going to be available at the startup for this, you know, we can bring, always bring him in. He's always going to be part of it, no matter what.
He is.
But between him and also James Klessens, they've been very instrumental in giving the signal. So I mean, I hate to, hate to fill, fill the business economic in with Brian Mick when you have, in my opinion, a standout James Klessens, if you know less than one.
Madam Chair, I would agree.
So
Not to jump ahead.
So which one are we on?
We're about travel and tourism. And the last name I'm hearing is Brian Mick. Is that? So, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, we really don't have Madam Chair, it's the only two names left. If Glenn Ross is not going to be around, it's James, Brian Mick.
Carrie Pay.
And Carrie Pay.
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion to be put Brian Mick in the representative for travel and tourist difference.
Motion, do I have a second?
I have a second for discussion, bud.
Go ahead.
Remind me again, Carrie, Ray.
Has, has the Cody Mercantile been here for 14 years?
She's
He is here. Does a lot of work with the firearms industries. Familiar with that, been out to the property, instituted venue, would like to help.
Madam Chair, so in my mind, Mr. Pay would be like business and maybe like a business because he's run a business, right? You said Cody Merk and has fire, because he can't fit now under the firearms one because we already did that. Travel and tourism, maybe.
I'd like to withdraw that motion. I had looked at my notes wrong, but I agree with Commissioner Simone, that was who was my choice on that. For the travel and tourism. Or was that, no, which one?
Travel and tourism is who we're, is who you made the motion on.
Yes, that's, that's, okay, so I would withdraw that motion.
So we're back to travel and tourism. And then are we talking about Carrie Pay there?
Well, I was thinking more because he has a business, correct? So he's familiar with business and has the firearms background. So I was thinking Mr. Pay around, maybe for business and economic development or at-large, but if we're so not, I'm, I don't think tourism and economic development on that one. So if we're on, okay, so I'm complicating this. If we're on economic and tourism, tourism and economic development, it's okay. I need more coffee. So you still have Brian, Brian Mick, James Klessens.
Cindy?
Yeah, but
Well.
Madam Chair, I, I, as we move on, I know I'm jumping ahead and I definitely maybe should have backed up to where, where Mr. Commissioner Mangold started. I definitely think that Sandy Thomas is, is going to be a shoe man for her experience and background. So we need to save this spot for her. At this point, it looks like at-large. I mean, she doesn't really fit tourism. She could maybe fit business, but
Well, she's been the procurement officer for the Navy for however many years, so that might work too. I know that James applied and James interviewed. I don't want to really speak for him. He did say he isn't going anywhere. We don't put him on the board, he's still going to help get this project working and work with them. So that's from there. Travel and tourism.
Why'd you withdraw?
I don't know.
Madam Chair, I think James gets into that spot quite a bit, what he did for coding, he has his pulse on travel and tourism, so.
Tourism or business and economic development? Yeah, those two that are open.
It would be, you could
Right.
Yeah, I'll take that.
So where are you putting him? James on economic development?
Yes.
Economic development and business. And I have Scott Mangold making the motion and Scott Stewart seconding. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Travel and tourism. We have we have Carrie Pay and Brian Mick. I think Brian Mick.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I nominate Brian Mick for the position of, which one?
Travel and tourism.
Travel and tourism.
I brought that up 10 minutes ago.
Oh, hush.
Then what are we waiting for?
Are you seconding?
I'll second.
Thank you. I moved and seconded to put Brian Mick in the government tourism slot. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Last one is the at-large, and we talked about it, but we didn't actually do a motion, and that motion probably needs to be provisioned.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Cindy Thomas to be the member to serve at-large.
Second.
Provided she meets the criteria.
Provisional.
Provided she reads the criteria. Which is too difficult, I don't think. It's up to her.
Right. I have a motion and a second in discussion on the motion. Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Do you want to read, will you read them again?
Local government, Daryl Stewart, firearms industry, Jason Byer, Buffalo Bill Center, Daniel Michael, travel and tourism, Brian Mick, business and economic development, James Klessens, at-large Cindy Thomas.
Madam Chair, I'm going to suggest an easy term for Daryl Stewart, follow his, I, I mean, I have no doubt he'll be relaxed. I believe he has two, two years left.
Oh, yeah.
Is that right? So let's, let's put Daryl in at two rotation.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Klessens.
He just wants to
He just wants, you want, I thought you said
He wants one year, yeah.
Who's that?
Klessens. Okay, so we have another one-year term besides Klessens. What do you want to do there? Do you want to go with the Gunworks one in case we find there's a
I would prefer that.
Jason Byer.
Jason Byer, one year.
One year. Then on a two-year, we have Daryl and we would have Brian Mick or
Well, only one does a two-year term and then the other three remaining do.
So there's two, one-year, two-two-year and
One One member appointed, two members appointed by the county shall serve an initial term of one year. The second member appointed by Cody shall serve.
By Cody.
Oh, Cody, okay, not the county.
Right.
So how many do we have?
Two, two and two, one year, two years and three years. We have six people.
We have what left?
Yeah.
We have. We have two people for each option, one year, two year or three years. So we've already done two for the one year. We have one for the two-year.
Madam Chair, I would recommend Brian Mick for a three-year because he's going to be the type that's going to dive into something and if it's fundraising.
Okay. I'm going to suggest Cindy Thomas for the other three-year. So that puts Danny Michael at the other two-year.
Yeah.
Okay, so if I read through here, we have a two-year on Daryl Stewart, one-year on Jason Byer, a two-year on Daniel Michael, three-year on Brian Mick, one-year on James Klessens and three-years on Cindy Thomas. Is that all agreeable? Can I have a motion to accept the terms?
I make that motion, Madam Chair, after Constance.
Second.
Madam Chair, can I just make sure I've got that? So I've got Joe Stewart, two-year, lessons, one-year, Byer, one-year, Mick, a three-year, Thomas, a three-year and Michael, a two-year.
Yes.
Stewart made that motion.
Yes, and Lloyd second. Any further discussion on the motion for the term? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okey-dokey. It started, the city of Cody is supposed to do theirs tomorrow. Okay. We're just a little behind. Uh, 1:30, Jenny. Mercantile planning and zoning at NIP, simple sub number 326.
I know.
Thank you, Madam Chair. James Atnip submitted a final plat application to request approval of the final plat to divide an approximately 10-acre parcel into two five-acre lots for residential use. It is a simple subdivision and it's located approximately 4.6 miles southwest of Cody, half-mile west of the intersection of State Highway 9291 and Bartlett Lane within the dress of 46 Bartlett Lane in Cody. Neighboring land uses are primarily residential and ag. Proposed lot one is vacant land. Proposed lot two is developed with a residence, two permitted septic systems and a domestic water well. A new building permit has been issued for residents that will use, uh, one of the existing septic systems. The proposed subdivision is in a GR5 zoning district and the lot sizes are consistent with that zoning district. Relevant agencies were notified as required and responded as follows. Park County Fire District 2 can provide fire suppression. Cody Conservation District identified one primary soil type on the property. It is suitable for dwellings with basements, but somewhat limited for dwellings without basements. The entirety of the property is considered prime farmland if irrigated. The entire property has favorable conditions for septic tank absorption fields. TCT stated they have terrestrial wireless service available in the area and may be able to provide service depending on line of sight to one of the towers. USPS can provide mail service. Park County Weed and Pest will require a long-term noxious weed management plan. School District Number Six can provide bus service. The property has water, water rights and Cody Canal Irrigation District is, um, is waiting for a plan to be submitted. That was in their initial response. The Park County Treasurer stated taxes are paid in full. Northwest Water, just rural water district stated the meter pit identified on the plat will serve lot one and the applicant is paid for a second service for proposed lot two. Park County Public Works, uh, confirmed legal access is by direct frontage to Park County Road 6SU Bartlett Lane. It is a county maintained paved chip sealed road. The existing residence on proposed lot two has an address of 46 Bartlett Lane. Any new structures or dwellings for lots may be addressed by submitting a request to Public Works after a building permit has been issued by P&amp;Z. There are no immediate concerns with drainage and erosion control and a plan will not be required at this time. Game and fish have no terrestrial wildlife comments. Black Hills Energy has not provided a response and neither has Rocky Mountain Power. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with conditions. An approved long-term noxious weed management plan has been submitted by the applicant. Um, we were notified that Cody Canal Irrigation District verbally approved the water distribution plan and a copy of the approved plan has now been received. The applicant has placed the appropriate notes and conditions on the final plat regarding permitting requirements for wells, access approaches, potential for engineered septic systems and the right to Farm and Ranch Act of 1991. The applicant's representative has stated that RMP has installed two meters, one for each lot on the proposed subdivision, indicating power services available and installed. A response from Black Hills Energy will be necessary before final plat recording, so it could be noted on the disclosure statement if the service is available. A driveway maintenance agreement will be recorded with the final plat and the applicant has indicated a legal perimeter fence exists and they will provide an affidavit stating the same to be recorded with the final plat. Plat Review Committee reviewed the final plat and a revised final plat was submitted. Applicable final plat specifications have been met and the applicant has submitted supporting documents as specified. A subdivision improvements agreement is not required since no applicable improvements are proposed during complete. Planning and zoning department staff recommends approval of the final plat of ATNIP SS-326 with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall provide an affidavit of subdivision's compliance of fencing requirements for recording with the final plat. Number two, prior to recording the final plat, the applicant shall provide a complete notarized disclosure statement, including statements regarding utility availability. Number three, the applicant in the presence of a member of planning and zoning department staff shall record the final plat and all required final plat submissions in the office of the county clerk recorder. And number four, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards and the Park County Development Regulations and the minimum subdivision requirements set forth in Wyoming Statute 18-5-306. Thank you.
Thank you. This is not a public hearing. Are there any questions from commissioners or staff? No. It's a pleasure to the board.
Madam Chair, move to approve the ATNIP simple subdivision 326 with staff recommendation.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ATNIP simple sub number 326 with recommendation. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Close to back on schedule. Next thing on our agenda is Jenny and Erica, planning and zoning staff, uh, fiber, simple sub number 322.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kyle Bieber, applicant on behalf of Chad and Jennifer Bieber, are, as the landowner, submitted a final plat application to request approval of the final plat to create one two-acre lot and one 1.99-acre lot for residential use. The subdivision is a simple subdivision. It is located approximately two miles northwest of Powell, northeast of the intersection of Lane 7 and Road 11 with an address of 1099 Lane 7, Powell. Neighboring land uses are ag and residential. Proposed lot one is vacant residential land. Lot two is developed with a residence, accessory structures and a septic system. It's in a general rural Powell zoning district and the lot sizes are consistent with that zoning district. Relevant agencies were notified as required and responded as follows. TCT stated they may be able to provide services to this location depending on line of sight to one of their towers. They also requested a utility easement to assist with deployment of fiber optics to the lots in the future. Garland Light and Power stated they can serve the subdivision. A power line will have to be built up Road 11 from Lane 7. Trees on the east side of the road may require the line to be built on the west side and span over Road 11. MDU stated they have a gas main on the east side of Road 11 and can provide service to proposed lot two. Lot one is currently served. Powell Clark Spork Conservation District identified one primary soil type on the property. It is not limited to somewhat limited for dwellings and small commercial buildings, prime farmland if irrigated and is considered somewhat limited in regard to septic tank absorption fields due to slow water. Park County School District can provide bus service and RWD has the ability to serve proposed lot one and currently serves lot two. The Park County Treasurer confirmed 2023 taxes are paid in full and the first half of 2024 taxes will be due in November of 2024. I also looked up ITAX this morning, since that's not a very current answer, and it shows the first half of the 24 taxes have been paid and the second half is due in May. Park County Fire District One can provide fire suppression, provided accesses are constructed to accommodate their fire equipment. Game and fish have no terrestrial wildlife comments. Park County Public Works stated that the parcellized legal access from Lane 7 and Road 11 by direct frontage. Both are improved, uh, with a paved chip sealed surface and are maintained by road and bridge. No new subdivision roads are proposed at this time. Lot two has an existing residence and approved access point to Lane 7. A right-of-way permit application must be approved by Public Works for any new accesses or improvements to access points. Lot two has an existing address, 1099 Lane 7. Any new structures, dwellings may be addressed after a building permit has been issued by P&amp;Z. A drainage and erosion control plan will not be required by Public Works at this time. Park County Weed and Pest found noxious weeds on the property and a long-term noxious weed management plan is required. Shoshone Irrigation District will require a water distribution plan and sprinkler irrigation. USPS can provide mail service. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval with conditions. An approved long-term noxious weed management plan has been submitted by the applicant. Uh, the applicant has placed the appropriate notes and conditions on the final plat with regard to permitting requirements for wells, access approaches, unknown water quality and cisterns, potential for engineered septic systems and the right to Farm and Ranch Act of 1991. The applicant has provided an approved water distribution plan. They've indicated a legal perimeter fence exists and they will provide an affidavit stating the same to be recorded with the final plat. The plat review committee reviewed the final plat and a revised final plat was submitted. Applicable final plat specifications have been met and the applicant submitted supporting documents as specified in Appendix Four of RIX. A subdivision improvements agreement is not required since no applicable improvements are proposed during complete. The planning and zoning department staff recommends approval of the final plat of Bieber SS-322 with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall provide an affidavit of subdivision's compliance of fencing requirements for recording with the final plat. Number two, the applicant in the presence of a member of the planning and zoning department staff shall record the final plat and all required final plat submissions in the office of the county clerk and recorder. And number three, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards and the Park County Development Regulations and the minimum subdivision requirements is set forth in Wyoming Statute 18-5-306. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is not a public hearing, um, so I would ask if the commissioners have any questions for staff. It's a pleasure to the board.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the final plat for Bieber SS-322 with conditions as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve with conditions. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Great.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Of course. Probably, but sir, unless, are you expecting?
No.
Okay. Okay, the next is not a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and move forward. Uh, 2 o'clock, Jenny and Erica, who we've seen most of the day. This is W, simple subdivision number 320, final plat review.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Ben and Kathleen Williams submitted a final plat application to request approval of the final plat to create a two-lot simple subdivision comprised of one 1.84-acre lot and one 33.19-acre lot for residential and commercial use from an existing 35.03-acre parcel. It is a simple subdivision and located approximately a half-mile south of the intersection of State Highway 141620 East and State Highway 120 South on the west side of State Highway 120 South with an address of 2631 Highway 120 South. Uh, neighboring land uses are ag and commercial. Municipal review is required since the property is within one mile of the city of Cody. Proposed lot one is developed with two existing structures, a 27,520-square-foot building and a 2,800-square-foot building. The county issued permits for both structures as commercial storage units. There are no wells or septic systems on proposed lot one. Proposed lot two is developed with an existing residence, buildings used for commercial purposes and a septic system. A small wastewater system permit has not been issued by the county for the existing system. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service National Wetlands Inventory identified wetlands on the property. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is the governing authority over wetlands identified. The proposed subdivision is in a planned unit development, PUD number three. Subdivision for commercial use as proposed is consistent with the PUD. Relevant agencies were notified as required and responded as follows. Rocky Mountain Power stated they have the ability to provide electrical service upon completion of necessary contracts and agreements. Park County Fire District 2 stated the proposed subdivision is within their district boundaries. TCT stated they have the availability and capacity to provide service with fiber optic services in the area. USPS can deliver mail. Black Hills Energy stated they do have a natural gas main running north-south along Highway 120 and they do not foresee any issues providing gas service to the location. Park County Weed and Pest is not requiring a long-term noxious weed management plan. Cody Canal Irrigation District is working with the applicants to develop a water distribution plan. Park County School District Number Six can provide bus service to the subdivision. YDOT stated the existing access is permitted as a commercial access. The proposed subdivision does not constitute a significant change in use and no access application will be required for it. The Cody Conservation District provided a soils report determining much of the property is not considered prime farmland. The majority of lot one and the central eastern portion of lot two are suitable for development, including structures with basements. The remaining extent of lot two has very limited potential for structures with or without basements, primarily due to shrink swell potential. Soil features in lot one are moderately favorable for driveway and road development. Limiting factors include frost action and shrink swell potential of soils. Road and driveway development on lot two presents increasing challenges due to the greater potential for shrink swell action and low soil strength. More frequent road maintenance may be expected. Across the entire 35 acres, shallow excavations for utility lines and open ditches are somewhat limited due to dusty soil and unstable excavation walls. Although lot one is moderately favorable for septic systems, careful consideration should be given for design and citing, given the exceptionally slow movement of water through soils present. Lot two presents more challenges for septic system installation due to the soil depth to the saturated zone and slow water movement. The city of Cody stated it does not appear the subdivision will impact the city. A representative of Sage Creek Water Users Association stated the addition of another user on the shared well based on a 30-plus-year history will not have a negative impact on the current users. A recorded joint venture agreement appears to be in effect to address operation and maintenance of the shared well and pipeline and states no other further or additional properties will be entitled to use the pipeline unless and until the parties to this agreement shall have agreed unanimously in writing to such extension. Board of County Commissioner minutes from July 26, 1983 indicate one of the water users tied to the JVA approached the commissioners with concern that too many water taps in the Sage Creek domestic water system were causing a shortage of, shortage of water, which affects the Cody Road and Bridge shop. It is unclear what, if any, further actions were taken at that time. The applicants have provided a statement and summary of their research findings for the shared well. They believe that their property is the only remaining property authorized to be, that's on the joint venture agreement and they consent. It is unclear if the JVA is in effect and if existing water rights support the addition of another user on the shared well. Park County Public Works provided the following comments. YDOT should be consulted regarding existing access. YDOT should be consulted regarding existing access. The property has an address of twenty-six thirty-one, Highway one-twenty. A separate address may be issued for existing structures with the middle of a request for address form from Public Works. A drainage and erosion control plan will not be required by them as it relates to the proposed development. The applicant has placed the, oh, I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the subdivision with conditions. The applicant has placed the appropriate notes and conditions on the final plat with regard to permitting requirements for wells with the State Engineers Office, access approaches, wetlands, potential for engineered septic systems, water quality, driveway maintenance responsibility, and the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act of nineteen ninety-one. The applicant did not obtain a water analysis from the shared well for lead, arsenic, copper, zinc, and manganese. However, the applicants feel this is unnecessary since they have a note regarding the presence of total coliform and potential for necessary water treatment on the plat. A shared driveway maintenance agreement between lot one and lot two will be recorded with the final plat. The applicant has provided an affidavit stating that a legal fence exists around the perimeter of the proposed subdivision. The plat review committee reviewed the final plat and a revised plat was submitted. Applicable final plat specifications have been met and the applicant submitted supporting documents as specified. A subdivision improvements agreement is not required since no applicable improvements are proposed or incomplete. The planning and zoning department staff recommends approval of the final plat of the WSS dash three-twenty with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall provide a shared driveway maintenance agreement between lot one and lot two for recording with the final plat. Number two, the applicant shall provide an approved water distribution plan for recording with the final plat. Number three, the applicant in the presence of a member of the planning and zoning department staff shall record the final plat and all required final plat submissions in the office of the county clerk and recorder. And number four, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations and the minimum subdivision requirements as set forth in Wyoming Statute eighteen dash five dash three oh six. Thank you.
Again, this is not a public hearing. Is there any questions or staff?
Madam Chair. Okay, so I, I have a couple of questions. If I can do two. Okay. Um, so I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit confused about the joint venture. So it says that they, they felt they were the only remaining members to the joint venture. But when I read the joint venture, um, there's one, two, three, four, five parties listed on that original document that's in our packet and Park County is listed as one. So that concerns me that, do we have any verification that there aren't these other one, two, three? Because Park County is still one, um, so they're, so they're not the only existing member. Um, do we have any clarification from the other four that they're not?
No, um, I mean, and perhaps, um, Kate can provide more color on that. Yeah. Yeah, that might.
Yes, please. I'll need you to come to the table and go ahead and use the mic and identify yourself through the rest of the place. Oh, Kathleen Williams. Um, so.
I, I can't even remember what year it was. Do you know what year it was?
The joint venture agreement? I do. I feel like it was.
Nineteen seventy-three, July ninth nineteen seventy-three.
Very long story. A joint venture agreement was done because that highway lost its water rights. They used to be under, I think, an oil company. And so the original owner of our property, they all got together, the five people on the joint venture agreement all got together and dug a well. They did this joint venture agreement and it was Paul Roberts, this, the county building, our property, which was Dorothy Dobbs Buchanan, and then two people that were at the end of our side of the highway. They did this joint venture agreement. And Doug Well did all the easements. It was kind of a big deal because we had to do all the research on it. When we started to do our subdivide, Joy Hill had stated that we had to follow the joint venture agreement. So I started to do some research and Paul Roberts, who's across the road from us, um, his mom actually was the secretary of all of it. And so he truthfully knew the most about what wasn't documented. So I had done all the research, looked in all at all the searches I could do to see if there was any additions to this joint venture agreement. And, because I knew who was on Northwest Rural Water. I called Northwest Rural Water and I believe that was in my email too. Um, and I, I said, can you help me verify that these people are on Northwest Rural Water and no longer on the water line? Because according to the joint venture agreement, there's only five of us. So I spoke to our attorney about it and the more I researched it and talked to Paul, I said, who's even left on this thing? You know, did anyone do get on it? You know, because there are some people on the well. Do they have the authority to be on the well? That's debatable, but according to our joint, joint venture agreement, which is what we're required to follow of the five people, we are the only remaining people on the well. Paul Roberts, um, is on Northwest Rural Water. The county, the county's been on Northwest Rural Water for a while and that's actually what happened is I think it came behind them and came on Northwest Rural Water.
Okay.
They were the second, they, they were the second people. Then down the highway from us were, is it Cooper? There were two Coopers. That property went to Northwest Rural Water. So technically, according to our joint venture agreement, we are the only ones still officially authorized to be on that water line.
So that would be the Dorothy Dobbs Buchanan, which is now yours.
Yes.
Part. Okay. Okay, that makes sense. And then my second question that I was confused about in this was the water analysis.
I sent you the second one.
So you did get those?
Yes, I, and if I look at my emails, they had requested a lead. It was like three things.
Magdees and yes.
Yes, I, I do, I.
I apologize.
No, that's all right. I, I sent it to her because it was kind of a, when I went in to get the second one done, I said, I have to have it tested for lead and she's like, why? And I said, I don't know, because I got poly pipes. The whole system is poly. And that came back good and it is in an email.
Okay.
Because I, the first one I screwed up and didn't send to you. And then when I sent you the second one, um, but I know I sent it to you and I, I could probably look it up on my phone.
Okay, and I think, yeah, I mean, I, I think we're covered there.
But I can look on my phone because I did get the second one.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want me to leave?
Yes.
You might be back, but you.
Right.
Any other questions, thoughts? Um, when we talk about the shared driveway, that will continue according to YDOT. They will use the one entrance and then whoever buys to the south will use that same, just go along the front there.
Okay. All right. That's what's proposed exactly.
Okay, anything else? Pleasure, the board.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the W. Simple subdivision three twenty. Final plat review as presented with conditions, staff divisions.
Second.
I moved and seconded to approve the W. Simple subdivision number three twenty final plat with recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
When do you get to talk?
Erica just won.
You just high candy, is that what you are? Or JD won't let you talk?
It's in the email. Thank you.
Simple subdivisions are required to have water.
They're not. PUD. We've been picking on him all day. Started out first thing this morning. Next thing on our agenda, we're a little bit ahead, but I think it's fine. You're not expecting anybody else, right?
No.
Okay. Consider early partial release of retainage funds held in Groot House Construction, Powell Library and Courthouse Projects.
Take one of each, second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay? Couldn't remember which one you said first. I guess we could start with the courthouse.
That'd be fine.
Okay, yeah, and, um, which is the one with most of the numbers on it. Uh, as you know, on the HVAC project, which includes the courthouse, courthouse addition and the Public Works Building was added later as a, um, change order, um, or addendum to the, to the agreement. Um, you can see what I've provided to you is a summary of all the payments that's been made to, uh, Groot House up to this point. The last one, I believe, was what she just approved today, which would be that pay estimate number nineteen. And, um, and so you can see the amount of the seven-point-two million-ish where, which is the total amounts paid. Uh, we've held as much as three-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand four-twenty-one. Uh, back in February, you recall, we came in and requested early release uh, in the amount of two-seventy-six, four-forty-seven. That's on the bottom there. And, um, the current request is to release another fifty-five thousand, which would leave about thirty thousand nine-seventy-four in the retainage. And the main thing is they're all but done with that project. We've, uh, advertised publicly at the end of that date is, uh, April twentieth, which we've kind of done that in phases. But everything that, uh, has been done, um, with the exception of some of the carpet work, a little bit of striping, uh, we've had some, we were holding quite a bit back for the automation systems, the controls, all but one or two very minor things and that should be wrapped up in a week. So, um, they've requested early release and then we would come back again to release the last bit once carpet, once everything is done. So, which would be after the April twentieth deadline. But, um, yeah, they've done a good job and, and I think what we're holding is more than enough to cover any, any remaining issues. So I would, uh, just recommend that, uh, consider releasing retainage in the amount of fifty-five thousand on behalf of Groot House, leaving thirty thousand nine-hundred-ish left of retainage.
Madam Chair, move to, uh, release the fifty-five thousand dollars retainage to Groot House Construction for the courthouse addition of Public Works Building.
Second. I moved and seconded to release the retainage as requested. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes. Madam Chair, I, I don't have a problem with it at all. I just kind of question this because it's, it's got us in the past. What, moving forward, I mean, what kind of guarantee do we have on this con, on, on the contract? Is it a year?
Yes, there's a, there's a one-year, um, warranty period that, and, and really it started at the point of substantial completion, which was, which was really a couple of months ago or something.
We did too.
Yeah, we've, we've done a really phases for the building and that's why we've been working closely with staff or with Jack to just make sure, because it's HVAC and, and, and they're, they're going to be watching as we move into summer, making sure air conditioning works like it's supposed to. And so, so that'll all be warranty. If, if there's something else that pops up, um, they will have to take care of that under warrant.
Typically, um, does the industry retain anything for the warranty period?
Nope. No, but we do have a, um, a performance payment bond that we.
It is eligible, is still intact.
Yeah, it's still attached, attached, kind of turns into a maintenance bond, but, but that will go until we release, yeah, final acceptance.
Performance bond. I don't foresee a problem with the construction we've had, but I know years ago, you'll, you.
Yeah.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor to release the retained jobs requested. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Next, Madam Chair, the other one, also a, a Groot House project is the, uh, Powell Library, um, which were early, even though it's been, um, yes, since, when did they start? Last summer, as far as knocking down the building, I guess it'd have been fall. Yeah, Sept-September. Um, but reason why we're here today, they're still hold, they're holding retainage for some of the work that's been done in phases. The demolition of the old building was done by a contractor that's now, all that, his work is done and he's been done for several months. And, uh, so he's requesting through Groot House that we go ahead and re-release that retained it so that he can be, uh, paid out his remaining retained. So again, it's kind of early, but we've got, um, they billed about one-point-eight million. So I think that's fifteen, twenty percent roughly of the contract. And we're continuing to acquire retainage every month. Right now, we've got eighty-nine thousand seven fifty in retainage. If we release what they're requesting, which is the eleven-five-twenty-five, we still have seventy-eight thousand two-twenty-five in retainage. And again, that will continue to grow every month as we, uh, continue to build the building. So I didn't see a problem with it with where they're at, where they're bidding like the phase three. And so phase two of the works, which is the structure itself is in progress. This really has to do with phase one, which was the site work demo. And, and that part of it's been done and was satisfactorily.
Foundation.
Yeah.
If not, what do we do now?
I think we're good. The building came down like it was supposed to. But so, uh, Madam Chair, I, I guess I'd be requesting a consideration of releasing retainage in the amount of eleven thousand five-twenty-five on behalf of Groot House, um, leaving about seventy-eight thousand and change left in the retainage, um, which will continue to accrue additional funds, um, month to month with additional pay estimates.
Pleasure, the board.
Madam Chair, I move to release, uh, eleven thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, um, for a estimate nine. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, it really wouldn't refer to any pay estimates because you guys have already. Yeah. These are funds that have already been approved and they're sitting in the account.
Second. Motion, a second to release the eleven thousand five twenty-five to Groot House for the library project. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you. Hey Brian, a question of the, the, uh, the AC shuts down or here, the air handler shuts down and the wind flag stops, who do we call?
Not me. That sounds like a building to ground. Thank you. You guys can go take a nap now.
All right.
Move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For June.